I guess we have one more minute. Are we getting Cole online then? Cole's ready? Okay. Get the recording going. All right, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started here at 5:15 PM, Monday, November 4th, here in the Linden City Chambers. I'd like to welcome you. My name is Carolyn Lundberg here. And as Mayor of the city, I'll be conducting the meeting today, and I'd like to thank our council members. We do have a full quorum here with one of our council members, Cole Houli, online. And we always start off our meetings first with an invocation, which will be provided by Council Member Steve Stewart, and then we will immediately follow with our Pledge of Allegiance, and we have the honor of that being led by Judah Christensen, and we'll go to that point.
Our Father, who art in heaven, we are grateful this evening for the opportunity to gather here together for this Linden City Council meeting, and grateful for all those in attendance and all those who will be following these proceedings online. We are thankful for this country and for our great city, and we thank thee at this special time of year that we're able to participate in public elections, and pray that regardless of outcome, that all will be calm and peaceful and accepting. We are grateful for our peace officers and all other emergency responders for all they do, and pray thee to bless them and their families. We pray for guidance and direction this evening, and ask thee to bless us in all things, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right, Judah, if you'll come stand here.
Everybody please rise and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Great job, Judah. Thank you so much. All right, we have at the table over there a flyer with the agenda, if you'd like to follow that along this evening. We will now go on to item number, oh, sorry, our roll call. Let's go to, I'll just start with Cole online, and then we'll progress here this way.
Cole, are you here?
Okay, we'll come back.
There you go.
Present. Say "present."
Yes.
Thank you.
Van Broderick, present.
Steve Stewart, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Lincoln Jacob, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
All right, awesome. We are now then on to the meeting here on item number two on the agenda. We have some very special presentations, and we will first begin with our employee recognition for someone who has been a very long, long-living resident of Linden and also a tremendous, tremendous employee here in Linden, so well-deserving. So we'll go to that point. I assume, Adam, you're going ahead and introducing.
Heath Peters can come on up here. Juan, you're gonna come up with us? Oh, he's taking pictures. So I get the opportunity to recognize Heath here. He was nominated several times over our last few quarters as an employee that deserves recognition. Let me read what one of the employees submitted. "I am pleased to nominate Heath Peters for Employee of the Quarter. Heath consistently demonstrates a strong commitment to his work and is always willing to lend a hand when needed. His helpful nature is greatly appreciated by everyone he works with. Heath is not only hardworking, but is also a reliable team member who contributes to a positive and efficient work environment. His dedication and strong work ethic make him an invaluable asset to Linden City, and I believe he deserves recognition for his outstanding efforts. Thank you for considering Heath Peters for this honor, and we're excited to recognize him as well. $50 gift certificate and a handshake."
Keith.
I wanted to add Heath and a lot of Public Works employees, but I've noticed this with Heath. He finds things around town that needs improvement, and he just does it. A few months ago, he said, hey, those welcome, sent me an email, said those "Welcome to Linden" signs are kind of fading, had the old horse logo on it, and they were located around town. He says, "We should put some new ones up," and he and I shot a few emails back and forth, and he ended up using this Centennial logo, and I don't know if you've seen those, and put up, I don't know, yeah, half a dozen signs around town. Little things like that, trying to make Linden City better. So I appreciate his efforts to go out of his way and make this a better place. So, thanks again.
Thank you, Heath. Heath, would you do us the honor, I would love for you to get a picture with us here on the City Council. It would be an honor if we could do that for a quick minute. And I can't imagine how many hundreds or thousands of times he's plowed the snow and been up at all hours, so we really appreciate you so much. All right, we have another exciting presentation tonight. We would like to invite our chief up to go ahead and start that.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Before, Jeremy, come on up, explain why we're here, for Jeremy, but.
The mic is gravely.
There we go. Is that better? All right, so first off, I want to publicly just acknowledge the rest of the crew that's here tonight, just for all they do. I don't say it enough, but these guys do a tremendous job. Over the weekend, we had a serious case, and they followed up and made an arrest today, and it's just consistent work effort, and I'm just proud of everyone that works for the department. But the reason we're here is Jeremy Christensen. Jeremy has been with the department since 2008, right, February?
14.
Sorry, he started his career in 2008. He's been here since February of 2014, right?
I think so.
Pretty close. So he's been with our department. He's been here, he's done a tremendous job for the city. He's been consistent, analytically, he thinks things through, processes, knows the law. He's done extremely well, was made a corporal, and recently, we had an upgrade to a sergeant position to make the department a little more efficient and chain-of-command structure, and Jeremy was selected to fill that job. So we are here today to acknowledge that and present him with a badge, but I want him to introduce his family that's here, and then I'll have his wife Lindsay come up to do that.
Thank you, Chief. So my family that's here today, first starting with, on the left in the back row, my wife Lindsay, my mom, Phyllis, and Silas, Judah, Alvy, and Cash, my four sons. Thank you, guys, for coming.
We need to get a picture of putting on the badge here.
It's best that we have the wives of Panama.
Because they trust us, or we'll be in trouble.
It's okay to poke him, too.
She promised she wouldn't stab me.
Isn't there a hole in the lower one?
Got it? All secure? Let's give our sergeant a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, gentlemen. Can't say enough how much we appreciate you and all your work. All right, do we have any other announcements, man and council? All right, well, you all are so tremendous. We so appreciate you being here tonight. We do have some other exciting business from Public Works and a four-way stop proposal, and if you'd love to stay. All right, take care, have a great night. All right, we're on to item number three. This is our open session for public comment. We try to keep this brief, so if anyone would like to approach, we have the table here to state your name and make a comment. Welcome, Maxine. Hello.
Maxine Smith. I was here last fall and talked to you about three items, and I asked you at that time if you had ever gone to 280 West, 200 South, and ripped down that cul-de-sac to see that it did not have kerf gratter and did not meet the requirement of a cul-de-sac. I've had, the city dump trucks, employees, armed city, a wrecker today. None can make that turnaround without backing up, and six o'clock in the morning, motorhomes and trailers, not realizing it's a dead end. So did any of you go down that and check that cul-de-sac?
Didn't.
I've been.
Thank you.
It's really easy for me, though. I'm always right by there. Unfair advantage.
So you realize it doesn't, and then the problem that we have here. But in this second item, I found this on the right-of-way, and that right-of-way has six deeds on it, five users, and of course, Mr. Yardley on Mother's Stay went in with a track haul, ripped down a fence that had been there for seven years and a no trespassing sign, and totally demolished private property. And of course, the city, I had taken the papers and brought them up along with some other questions I had with Mr. Hess, and left them for him because he was out. Three times I called him and never was the call ever returned. So anyhow, that was an issue, as Mr. Yardley had ripped down that saying that he had his home loan under his father's VA, and his father had passed away and needed to have a new loan. So anyhow, we had told him no on the fence. He talked about taking it down again and spraying down my fence lines, and I said, "No, because that's all agriculture." That piece, and I'm talking, my property is two deeds, so we're talking that, it's always been agriculture. Well, it turned out that Mr. Yardley, after he destroyed private property and sign, that Mr. and Mrs. Yardley did go down the right-of-way on my side and sprayed it with weed killer, right down my fence drifted into the pasture. So for since the 1st of August until my cattle left on the 20th of October, I was unable to use that. My cows were beef and went onto the table, so I couldn't use it. I had to water it, had to have it mowed. And Mr. Yardley, he knows when we say no. Mr. Yardley worked for Heber Police Department up there as a detective, so he understands no, he understands the rules, the law. So, and then years ago, on this section of my deed, the city also told me when one of the children looked at it to build, that it was a non-buildable piece. So I got a piece of ground of antaxism and can't use, and the city done nothing. I was in and talked to the city lawyer about this, and he said he would follow up, and I never heard from him. So down the road, we had talked in '22 when the fire marshal said that Mr. Lundquist's property needed to be cleaned up, hadn't been cleaned up since 2014, and so he said it need to be done. Last year, when I come in the fall, the city said that Mr. Calley, he said he was working with them about cleaning this up. But as this year produced, that whole back piece has collected more, and it has thistle, Scott thistle, four to six feet tall. And so I come up and talk to the city's lawyer again about this issue, and I told him at this point that seed had matured and would blow over all of the neighbors.
Maxine, I, just for clarification, I have been down your cul-de-sac as well, so I'm getting a sense you've changed from a couple issues. So Mr. Yardley, where does he boundary with you?
The west side.
The west, and then Mr. Lundquist, is he across the street? The pasture across the street that you're talking about now, the thistle? Not Yardley, the one you're, Lundquist, where is his property?
He is on the west side where it goes down over the bank where they eroded and I needed a rechainy wall.
So both of these are adjacent properties to the west from you?
Adjacent to mine. One on the west, one on the north.
North?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So anyhow, Yardley's property continued to be a catch-all for mining pipes and everything else, along with rats, but I had no success dealing with the city. I called the county and said, "What is, is there an ordinance? What can be done?" Because that would spread my fields for 30 to 40 years on the seed. And so the gentleman over the county roads came. He went down, because you can see it from my bank up here.
Is that why Mr. Yardley sprayed, was to control the thistle?
No. Yardley controlled the weeds on the fence line on the right-of-way. We're talking down below the hill for thistle.
Okay.
On Lundquist's property.
On Lundquist.
So he came, he walked down to the field, he documented Mr. Lundquist's property. He took a picture, and he said he would send a letter that he needed to clean it up and how it was to be cleaned up, that the county had no control about enforcing it. And so I also mentioned the piece of property, if you go down North County Boulevard, after you cross the railroad tracks, three properties, that piece has been under the thistle for several years. Hay fields buy it, and so he also, from Google, took a picture and notified them that it needed to be done. And if that's a county road, he also, if you noticed, that field's been cleaned up, and the county road has been, or, North County Boulevard has been cleaned up of all weeds, trash, thistle. So it's been documented that Yardley's sprayed Lundquist, who's got this problem.
Is Lundquist the neighbor that has the fence backing up his yard?
He doesn't have.
He doesn't have any fence? Okay.
No. So anyhow, and I've talked to the lawyer about this, and nothing's been done. I just wanted you to know and understand my frustration about why my piece of property I haven't been able to use two months, two and a half months, pulled the cows off of it so they didn't eat weed killer. I pay property tax, and I can't even use the ground, and the city, and it's documented, said it was unbuildable. But yet, everybody else can, and you've just given Mr. Yardley, heating and air conditioning, a business license, as well as the rentals that the lawyer said rentals will increase traffic on the right-of-way. So you can see my frustrations. I appreciate you listening to me and understand where I'm coming when the city has ordinances. And I talked to the lawyer, and he said, "Yes, Linden City does have an ordinance against thistle, but nothing has been done. Our neighbors even took out an ordinance that you can't plant cotton trees." And I thought, good, put an ordinance for that and call a Chinese dance, because I've got neighbors with them, and I must have two hundred that I worked on again today. But thank you and hope that you will take consideration about enforcing the ordinance as it affects the rest of the citizens around. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any other further public comment for this portion of the meeting? All right, seen none. We'll move on now to item number four. This is our council reports. And Jake, would you like to, you have to head out. So Jake has already notified, he has to step away for a little bit, so.
I do have an important event that I need to attend, so I appreciate your patience with me. Just a couple of quick updates. Mayor and I had a really fun meeting, one of those really great collaborations with Val Peterson, President Jimenez from UVU, Mayor Cafusi, on our collaboration down there on the Utah Lake Project, and really great to see the momentum, the progress, and we're working towards really a win-win-win for all the organizations involved. And so appreciate the mayor working that up, putting that together, and really seeing a lot of momentum there. So I feel like we've got a great game plan there, and things are moving forward.
Do they have any timing for next steps, things that we might start to see?
We have an MOU that we're hammering out right now, a couple points that I responded to, and.
We'll talk about this more actually in our closed session tonight, so. Quick update from the police department, couple of arrests this week on, for individuals that were attempting to sell magazines to some senior citizens, maybe a little bit of nefarious activity going on there. One of the individuals ended up having a warrant out for his arrest, and then the officers were very active over Halloween. I don't know if any of you saw him at our trunk-or-treat, or out and about, they were on the streets, and so just appreciate all they're doing. Love to see in our new sergeant and his family today. Lastly, I had the opportunity to attend our trunk-or-treat, and my goodness, it was very crowded, and I thought, last year, we were so crowded, we moved it down here, and I thought, well, we'll have plenty of space, and it was bursting at the seams down there. It's a great event, had a good chat with Heath on, and a few of his staff members on how we, what a great problem to have, right? What's the solution for an event that's too well-attended by the community? So anyways, I leave that to our very capable, enabled Parks and Rec staff, and what a fun event. And I'm sure Steve will have a few more comments with his group in charge there, so that's all I have.
Thank you so much. All right, Lincoln.
I got my water line letter today, and I went through the process of checking out what I have, the material my water line is made of, and made a call in, and that was a simple call to make. I was very curious. I was involved in the construction of my home, so it was easier for me to determine what my water line was composed of. I think Steve has some follow-up information on that, but processing pretty simple. Denise said that they've had about 20 calls today, for what it's worth. North Point Solid Waste, Wednesday through Friday, I'm going to be attending a Utah Association of Special Districts conference, because there's not enough conferences and training in this role. I am looking forward to it. Special districts are a little bit different, so I'm going to be attending that. The next board meeting for the North Point Solid Waste is actually going to be their budget meeting, and that's going to happen the same time as the City Council meeting. Juan is going to be, well, Juan has some stuff about doing some reconstruction on 2000 West, and there needs to be a little bit of property transferred over. Juan's going to be out of town, so Noah is going to actually be presenting, and so I'm going to not attend City Council unless I'm needed for something important. I feel it's important to support Noah and Juan in that meeting. That was which state again? That's our next one, the 18th, isn't it? Okay. Yeah. So my heart will be here, but I'll be located down there. Also attended the Spectacular, my wife's son was there, and he's involved in NBA events with his career, and he said, "Wow, this is so cool," right? So to have somebody in that, very, very impressive. It was fun to participate in the Kia ribbon cutting. We had, we had a, we had our enforcement specialists. He's been with us about three weeks, but he's given notice. He's moving on, so we're going to have another opening there for that. And I submitted my photos, my choice on my photos, my voting on the photos.
I did that today as well.
Beautiful photos. That was a very, very difficult decision to make, but we certainly live in a beautiful community and some talented people capturing some beautiful images of our community.
Did you vote for mine?
I don't know. I specifically didn't, I thought it would be more appropriate. That's it.
All right, Steve.
It's really nice to honor Heath tonight, and I had an opportunity today to visit with three of our Public Works people, because I got my notice of unknown drinking water service line material, and after reading it, I'm just not very smart, and so I decided to call the smart people. And I had three different people on my property today as a Linden resident, and what I found is we have some really incredible employees here. Appreciate those who came. I had Matt Winward come, and then Paul Miller and Matt Neer, and they were able to help me with a couple of issues, and it was a really nice opportunity to see the kind of quality individuals that we have working within Linden City. So I appreciate that, and thank you, folks, for your service. Yeah, the Linden Spectacular, the youth council was out in force and was able to produce a trunk, as well as managing the, what do they call it, the spooky trail or the haunted trail?
Heritage trail.
And I have never seen anything so wonderful as what that was. There was hours put into that. It was just a great look, and I think it's not just our community, Jake, that's coming. I think our reputation is getting out there, because there's no way. I think the entire city of Linden and maybe a couple others seem to be there, but it was, it was really a nice event, and the youth council really enjoyed serving there. I was going to also mention the Kia grand opening as liaison to the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce, and that was a really nice event, another great business that's coming to Linden, and appreciate Doug Smith Kia for being here. And then finally, I'd just like to give a shout-out to Jamie Jensen. I just, I don't say enough about her role as our senior coordinator and the many activities that are available to our seniors, but I've talked to her recently, and I just, I love getting her emails and seeing what they're doing in our newsletter. She sends out regular notifications. They're informative and positive, and I want to give all of you a little challenge here to save the date for Friday, December 20th. They are going to have a Noon Years Eve party in the community center. It'll be on Friday, the 20th, at noon, and they're going to have a balloon drop and a $5 luncheon and entertainment, and just want you to put that on your calendar if you're able to come. I'd like you to do that. I'm planning on being there. Thank you.
Get the alert of in advance so they know?
Yeah, the deadline's the 18th, and then I had to remember, and I should ask her if it's that November or December 18th, so I'll get back to you when I get that, but yeah, there is a deadline, but I'm not sure if it's November or December. I didn't ask, but I'll check here while you're talking.
Noon Years, what a great name for that.
Yeah.
As I'd mentioned last time, it is the season of the start of irrigation, canal company meetings, North Union and Provo bench meetings this past week. Assessments were determined, and we're just going to bill you, Adam. I think they're both at 145 now, if I remember that correctly. We gave the update on the Provo River aqueduct turnout last time. We have six users now left in North Union as we transition away from the canal company, and trying to make sure all of the individual water users are taken care of in that regard. And we're hoping that next Monday, tonight, that maybe if you're going down a certain location that's been blocked off for a couple of months, you can drive through now. So we'll see if that happens. Fourth North and Center Street, Fourth East and Center Street, sorry. It looks really good. If you haven't been by to go see that, Denny Farnworth and crews have been doing remarkable work, and it's turned out really, really well.
All right, thank you.
It's December 18th.
Yes, December 18th, so we have a good while.
So two days before, but don't forget.
Fantastic. All right, yes, go ahead, Cole.
Oh, yeah, I had one item from the Historic Commission. They're wanting to make a change to the Christmas tree lighting program. They're wanting to make a change to the Christmas tree lighting program, and wanted to share that with us and ensure that we all were comfortable and okay with that change. Typically, in the past, the mayor has shared some words, we did a countdown, and then the mayor would turn on the Christmas tree. What they are proposing is that we make that role of turning on the Christmas tree be an opportunity to honor a resident in the community. So the mayor would count down, and, well, we would introduce the, the honoree and say a little bit about them. The mayor would do the countdown, and then the honored resident would flip the switch. This year, they were hoping to have two. One would be a centurion, someone who was here as close to that original tree lighting as possible. And the other would be a representative from Mike's family to honor his contribution to the community. So that's the change they're proposing, and they just wanted to, Steve, that was okay with us. I, I think it's a, a great idea, and I'm open to other people's feedback.
Sounds great.
Sounds great.
No issues yet?
How does, will they continue to suggest or recommend names in the future for subsequent Christmas tree lighting events?
Yes, and then, in that point, it sort of could be a question of if it's somewhat different than like the grand marshal, you know, sort of process, where they submit names and we look at those. But yeah, they would continue to propose names of who could be honored by turn, by turning on the tree.
I like the idea of it being maybe some of the older, venerated residents, because they don't have the ability to serve as a grand marshal oftentimes, because it's such a strenuous thing to, to do potentially, so.
I, I think this is a great idea.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cole. All right, I'll get through this really quickly. Speaking of our centenarians, Richard Williamson, who was one of our two 100-year-old residents, born in Linden, that was in our parade, he passed away last week. His wife passed away only a few days prior, so two great people, lifelong Lindenites. And let's see, we've got, this past week, the Vineyard had their firehouse groundbreaking, and Adam and Kelly Johnson and I were there. So their, their model, interestingly, is to build a firehouse within a neighborhood, and the firehouse itself is a neighborhood home. Similar to what we did here before we built our big public safety building. So they're looking at that as like a, either a, a model to have more frequent integrated firehouses throughout the community, or they, you know, at least for now, that will serve if they, until they build a, a bigger facility, so that was interesting. Thanks, Brittany, for the daily email that's going out for the month of November. We love those uplifting things. Tabitha's Way also had their big groundbreaking for their huge new facility in Pleasant Grove. It's over by the former Water Gardens movie theater. It's fantastic. They are serving, I had the figures when I posted it, but it's like 150,000 people last year. It was a huge number between their three locations that they have, Saratoga, this one, and I think Spanish Fork. So there's a lot of need in the community, and they're doing an incredible job. Have to give kudos to our PD department and Kelly and, you know, the, and Adam for just the food drive that we do every year. We contribute a lot. We have the residents really show up and come out for that on our 9/11. I think the amount of the pounds that we donated this year, what was it, something like 8,000 to 10,000 range or something? Anyway, don't hold me to that. It's off the top of my head. Let's see, we, and, and we had also, the, Mike Florence and I handed, attended an all-day conference, the Urban Land Institute, ULI, last week on Tuesday. And we spent the day also with our potential development partners there, the Castlewood that's working on some of this property out there on the west. And then the day before, I was spent at the Utah Lake Authority Symposium down at UVU. So it was a public policy day. We did have some Linden residents actually come out and, and listen that day. And there was a lot of great information on the inroads that are being made there at the lake. Pretty incredible stuff. You don't give up on the lake yet. It's, it's coming back. And then all.
That could be a theme.
Yeah.
Don't give up on the lake.
Right. Coming up, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, they have their Local Officials Day every January at the Capitol, where our youth council attends, and then also council members are invited to come up for Local Officials Day. That's, they just gave the date. It's going to be January 22nd, if you want to put that on your calendars. The Kia grand opening was fantastic. We now have, you know, between them, Genesis of Linden and Kia, really amazing business partners to have in the community. Great retail sales tax source, and, and so we're very blessed to have those. And I think, the final thing I just wanted to share, League of Cities and Towns, so Mayor Troy Walker is now serving as the president of the league. And as you all know, going into the legislative session, we always feel a little bit of trepidation, because there are so many bills coming after zoning, coming after taxing authority, all, you name it. And so currently, they have this flyer that they put together of the most common concerns that the league hears about city compliance with recent land use laws. So that is the internal ADUs, the design standards, station area planning, water conservation, infrastructure with the standard, road width that was changed last session to 32-foot width in residential areas with some limited exceptions. And the process, streamlining the process, what checklists off a complete application for developers, plan review, fees, inspections, private landscaping requirements, and bonding. So these are things that they're working on to hopefully build data from all the cities of saying to the legislators, okay, these are the most common concerns you have, and you keep legislating, you know, putting the vice on the cities in these, on these topics. Here's the actual information of how cities are responding or being good players in these areas. So that's something the league is definitely working on for us, so that's always good news. And that's all I have, so I'll turn it over to Adam for the administrator's report.
Just a few things on, to bring to your attention. December 2nd, we have a, the tree lighting that night that was mentioned earlier that will start at 6:00. Our council meeting is scheduled for that evening. We'll just start at 7:00 on that, so just an FYI. And then this year, our Parks Department is in charge of our employee Christmas party. They wanted to try to mix this up and do something different. December 19th at noon, they're going to have an employee Christmas lunch, and just employees, it's not spouses this year. And so you're welcome to attend that. That will be at the community center. And then, well, number five is under construction. The road detour was, was put up today. Cemetery expansion plans. We have our phase two out of three that we've, we've kind of narrowed that scope. That's been wrapped up as far as the plans go, and the intent is to hopefully get that ready for bid to go out this spring. We'll see what kind of numbers we get and possibly start construction next year, late 2025. Center Street, we talked about that. The goal is to try to open that by the 11th. Yeah? And then, if I could, really quick. I, I want to show you a couple of photos from, this is from 2022 of.
The Smith property.
Yes. If this will go, I'm not sure. That's going to let me open that all the way here. I don't know why it's not opening up all the way. Well, hopefully this is good enough to give you an idea there. So this is from a few years ago, the back property line. This is the property that she's mentioned is needing cleaning up. This individual, we've sent code violation requests for him to clean that. My understanding is there's progress that's been made, and it may not be to her satisfaction. But, so they're working on that. What's that?
Is the Yardley property? With Lundberg?
This would be Lundquist.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry. So from her description, my impression is they sprayed something along this fence line. Her property, there's two or three old field fences between their property and hers.
Is this the Yardleys then, or the Lundquists?
The Yardleys are the ones who sprayed, and they're to the north.
They're different.
And there is a boundary question. We've looked, our officers went out, responded, Mr. Yardley provided deed information, and then it really is a civil question.
So is the fence potentially, there's a dispute where the fence is?
Right, the fence being taken down. There was a question whether it was his fence or her fence, and, and I did sit down and, and meet with her and talk with her, and, and I called her back, and I just said, I'm looking at it, this just really is a civil issue. She goes, so I have to get my own attorney. I said, I'm sorry, but yeah, the city does not get involved.
And when she says there's unbuildable property, it's the, the rear area there.
Right, right. So, maybe. Yeah, I, I don't know.
I, I'm not positive. And so this is, this is the other property that she mentioned with Lundquist, with some of the debris that's back there. It is not visible unless you walk up to the front, the fence line.
But she's worried about the thistle.
She's worried about weeds, but she's worried about their junk and rodents, and we, we're unfortunately not able to satisfy Maxine. And with our efforts. And I, I don't quite know what else to do to help her. And, but I feel like we don't often get opportunities to rebut anything that she says. So I wanted to show you some of these photos. Noah and I spent probably two hours on this date when we went out there with her and walked the property. We've had probably half a dozen employees that have been to our property over the years and spent time there to try to help understand what's going on. The cul-de-sac is, there is a turnaround that's been installed. It's paved. The improvements along her frontage, we've discussed with her and our city engineers. We, we don't feel that installation of the improvements would, would be able to be done in such a manner that would provide better drainage. It would actually dump stormwater. If you were to channel it with a curb, it would dump onto this property here. There's fences that would have to be moved. It is her daughter's property. There's fences that would have to be moved.
Rock wall.
Yeah, there's a wall, there's a brick mailbox that would have to be relocated. There, there would be a lot of impact to her front driveway area, and we've asked for her to provide contacts for some of her children to see if we can help them understand some of these impacts. She's mentioned that one of her, I believe it's one of her sons is an engineer, and then ended up kind of pulling back and didn't want to provide us that contact information. So I don't quite know what else we can do. But we have tried to, as far as code enforcement issues that we can help with, we have certainly done what we can.
Juan has a comment.
Do we return her money, what she wanted for the sidewalk?
So that, what I don't believe she understands is right now, the city, even though, and what she gave, I don't remember off the top of my head, 1,800, couple thousand dollars, something like that.
And she wanted like a 9% interest?
Right now, essentially, whenever this road does get improved, the city is obligated to improve her frontage, whatever that cost may be, which would likely be, I mean, you're probably looking 20 grand. And so if we returned that money, I, I do not think that is in the best interest, long-term, for this property owner, whether that's her or somebody in the future. That would be an unwise decision. And so is it money back to her? Yes, but she could sell this with, we have provided in writing to her with a letter that says the city is obligated to put in those improvements.
I mean, this, this comment about the milk thistle, though, is, is new for me to hear. Is that something we could work on enforcement?
We have been working on that. I went down and spoke with Jacob, and, and progress is being made with, thistles are being removed. And the last I heard, you know, again, this was, this was back in August, September.
Which, okay, and in that area, okay.
So, so he had cut, there had been two code enforcement actions, the thistles, and then a.
The junk. There was some junk around?
The junk, that was all part of the same one, but they also, she also brought in a complaint about the neighbor and the home occupancy license. We verified that the neighbor, the Yardleys, are in compliance. They only have one employee. They're, they're doing everything they're supposed to. They do have an accessory apartment, but the, from what Mike told me, the parking is in compliance with what we're requiring. And so the Yardleys are completely in compliance. The, the neighbor behind to the west was coming into compliance. And, and it's our policy that if progress is being made, we continue to work with those, those people, so. But again, that was a couple months ago, was the last conversation I had on that.
That thistle she's complaining about is there, this on this west side?
I'm assuming it's in this gap right here, is, is my assumption.
And when you say it's, it's being taken care of, is that the property owner to the west?
Unfortunately, the gap is a no-man's land, essentially. There's no one owns it.
It could be fixed if property owners got together and actually cooperated and agreed upon a property boundary.
It was a former rail line from pioneer times.
Oh, wow.
So it sounds, it sounds to me like they were attempting to control the thistle by spraying, which she's the one complaining about.
Well, that was a different neighbor.
I, I'm not sure that that is Brian, because, in her description, because.
He lives across a gravel road, so I don't know what.
And the, the dispute, the fence was on the south side of that gravel road, and, and that's what she told me, that he took down the fence and then started spraying the weeds along that gravel road.
So he, he accesses his property, this is the other property. There's a gravel road, her property is here.
Right.
So you think it's thistle along this?
I don't think it was, I think it was just weeds, is what she told me.
Just weeds in general.
Yeah, just weeds.
Just spraying round up where she needs to graze animals.
In the end, that's a private property matter. There's no reason that the city would get involved and sell somebody that they, they need to go control weeds unless it's a fire hazard.
Or stop them from controlling weeds and all this.
All right, well, thank you for, for working and.
Okay.
Where, where it's appropriate for us to respond and get involved and be of assistance and help people cooperate according to what they need to for ordinance.
We will do, we will do our best. We, we have provided responses to all of her complaints in writing as well, and so, just as an FYI, so. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move now to item number six. This is the approval of the minutes for our city council meeting from October 21st. Council, if you've had a chance to review those, any additions or changes for our recorder?
If nobody has anything, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, October 21st.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is, thank you. That is unanimous. Okay. We'll move now to our consent agenda items portion of here, of the list, but we have no items today, so we're going to move on to item number eight. And we have a special presentation. Welcome, Director Garrido, and.
John Borden.
Welcome, Mr. Borden.
This is Jordan Borden with RH Borden. They've been a big help to, to our department in the sewer inspection realm. So I wanted to bring John, because the last project that we're doing with him, he's helping us find infiltration and inflow into the sewer system. And I approached you guys before showing you all this extra water we're paying for treatment with, with Orem City. So John, listening to me, says, what else can we help you with, Juan? And he says, well, if you can help me find infiltration and inflow, that would be great. And earlier this year, he approached me and says, I have the, the tool that we were looking for. He's, goes out there and finds all this great technology to help us make better, better decisions in spending our money. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
And thank you for having me. Delighted to be here. Thank you for all of your service. It's always impressive to sit in these rooms. So there's a presentation here. I wanted to, first of all, put a little bit of perspective on the influence that Linden is having across the country. You may not be aware of this, but you are one of the most progressive cities in the nation. You may not be aware of this, but you are one of the most progressive cities in the nation in your adoption of technology. A lot of it has to do with your leadership, so very much kudos to Juan and his, his forward thinking and the team that he works with. You've been absolutely phenomenal, just model city, in my opinion, on using new technologies to maintain infrastructure. The country has a big challenge with maintaining its infrastructure. And so, as we worked with you, we're actually using many of the things that we do with Linden as case studies for the rest of the country. We serve all the way across the country. I have teams in Kentucky right now that are doing what you guys have done. So thank you very much, and I think you're, you're sending ripples across the country, so thank you.
Good job, Juan.
The good thing about that is that every time John comes to me with a, with a project and says, "And what kind of discount am I getting, John, for being, being ahead of these things?" And we actually, we actually get great pricing, and he actually on or say, "You know what, we'll just keep that same pricing for the following year," and I appreciate.
So is this the John and Juan show?
That's right, that's it, J and J. So, the presentation we'll, we'll walk through. It, it is surprising to know that the statistic across the country that between thirty-five and fifty percent of the water that is treated was never used. That means that the, we have twice as many treatment plants in this country as necessary, and it's because of one thing, infiltration. So it's a pretty big problem. That's, it's not as, it's not to that degree here in Utah, thank goodness, but it is certainly across the country.
Is that groundwater?
It is groundwater and rainwater. And in Colorado, snowmelt, and here also, snowmelt. So we, we're doing studies on what are all the different ways that water can get into the sewer system unwantedly. Has big financial impacts, it also has, it can thwart the growth of a city because if you have a trunk line that's full of water, you can't grow. So it has a lot of real significant impacts all the way across the country. Next slide there. Different sources of infiltration, there's really, we call it I and I. It's inflow and infiltration. So here's a diagram of, you know, a house, and you have a rain gutter across the top of the house that's connected onto a lateral, that's going into a main line that flows into a trunk line. And if you think of all the places where water could get in, you have connections where rain gutters are actually funneling, funneling water into the sewer system. That's called inflow. And then you have things that are broken underground, such as a pipe or a manhole, and that's where water creeps into the system, that's called infiltration. So inflow and infiltration, two different types of entry, both a problem. And they both have different characteristics about them, and you would mitigate them differently. So it's important to know, not just, do I have water, but what kind is coming in? Next slide. So what we've done is we have developed a, we call it a basin approach, where you take a collection system, so what we're looking at here is the same system. On the left-hand side, we have a collection system, sewer system, that we've, we've broken into different basins. And a basin is just a common network of pipes that have a common outfall. And on the left-hand side, we've placed a sensor at the base of each of those major basins, and that's called a major basin study. This is what was just barely completed in Linden. What that allows us to do is prioritize the entire wastewater collection system to say which of these basins we need to go after. Most collection systems are in a shotgun approach. They just say, "I think I've got water over here, and so we'll go do some smoke testing in this part." And it really helps to break down the entire system in this major basin study. Once we know which of those basins is the top offender, so to speak, we will then put in hundreds of sensors within that individual basin and pinpoint exactly where the water is coming in. This technique is new to the country. There's some intellectual property that's going out on it right now. And you, as one of the first movers, are helping people see case studies where it actually works. And so, again, not only is it benefiting your city, you're actually sending ripples across the country. So thank you. We integrate that with a weather network. So the, the trigger that we're using to highlight where the water is coming in is rain. Although water can come in from groundwater, it can come in from snow and other sources. So we subscribe to the Barron, Barron Weather Network, it's the same network used by NASA. It's highly accurate, up to a half a mile, it's updated every four minutes, so you can see what the, what the water is out there. So you overlay, next slide. You overlay the weather with these sensors, and you get these patterns that come out. The top is showing a regular, they call it a diurnal pattern or a daily pattern. And then we get into other things like a blockage. What does it look like when you get a blockage in the pipes? And then the bottom two are the ones that we're really looking for. Inflow is a rapid spike, and then infiltration is this slow-growing spike. So as we place the sensors out in Linden, this is exactly what we saw. So, next slide. So this is the Linden study that we did. Left-hand side on the activity summary shows the twelve sensors that were placed. They were left in place and monitored from May through August. We just leave the sensors out there twenty-four seven, and they're just collecting data on that, that water pattern.
Are they actually in the, our pipes themselves?
They're in the, in the manhole. They sit on a crossbar at the top of the manhole, and they use ultrasonics, in this case, to watch that water level. So the data was collected for those twelve major basins. And what we're doing is we're waiting for the rain event. So we, it's kind of like fishing, put all the nets out there, and when the fish come, you catch them. And there was some big fish that came, as Juan can attest, on the eleventh and fourteenth of August. Next slide. So this was the data that was produced, and you can see, the, the bottom ones may be a little bit easier to see. You see that nice clean pattern, day in and day out. By the way, diurnal patterns are fascinating for wastewater geeks like me. You can really tell a lot about the behavior when people wake up, when they have their lunch, when they go to bed, just by that pattern of flow. So totally a side, side note there. But you can see in that rain event, how huge that spike was. And that is indicative of inflow, not infiltration. And so, you know, how would you mitigate that? Well, first of all, we want to go upstream and do a target study to say exactly where is that inflow coming from, but there's something open in the system, which is actually good news because you can find it, and mitigating inflow oftentimes is less expensive than mitigating infiltration. Now, not always, but there's hope there. So what we saw primarily in Linden was a lot of inflow, and that's very, very rapid. I think you saw that at the, the station that, that was working that evening with, with the weather. The bottom one there highlights the basin that had the most problem. You can go to the next slide. But you can see, next one here, those that are circled in yellow are the ones that have moderate infiltration. The one that has red is the worst one, and then the ones not circled don't appear to have any real significant infiltration. So you can see most of the I and I is over on the west side of the city. And those that have yellow are where we probably would recommend some additional studies. We did find blockages, so this graph on the bottom, just that big spike and flat, what that is, is something's elevated the water line and just kept it there. So there's something in the pipe. Or, we also talked about this when we did the report out, there's, that's just upstream from a pump station. So it could be that the pump station wasn't properly pumping down all the water, and so the manhole that was upstream was in constant surcharge. So those are some additional insights, and I think Juan has taken some action on that to, to look into that. I don't want to speak for you, but we talked about that. Next slide. So similar signs of inflow, that spike on the top one. The one on the bottom graph, you do see the inflow, but not to the, the high degree. And then next slide is on the east side of the city. You do see that spike during the rain, but not nearly as significant. And so when we come to, and, and let's, let's march through the last couple of slides here.
And would that be explained by the topography that's uphill?
Hmm, yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. Although you can have, you can have that, those dynamics of infiltration and flow uphill as well, depending on the slope of the trough in the bottom of the manhole. For example, up in North Logan, we saw a lot of manholes that had breaks in them. And the manholes themselves is where the water was coming in. So yes, absolutely, the slope is, is part of it. But you could see it in both cases. And then the next slide, there, yeah. So this, this graph at the top showing that there's probably some opportunity to clean that line because it was dirty and elevating. So overall, if you look at the prioritization on the city, we recommend doing a target study over there on the west side. Focusing on that will probably give the biggest return on that investment to mitigate the, the I and I in the city. There is, I don't know if you got that second link?
While he's looking, that one that was in the red, is that the one that we did that liner in?
No. Go back to the, to the...
It'd have to be blown up a little bit more for me to see exactly where that was.
Yeah, we'll, we'll show it here, if we can pull the next link.
Or that one's not working for me. Okay, that's all right, that's right.
I can just turn this over, because this is the actual live scenario of what, what is happening.
Let me hit play here.
When that rain event came on the eleventh and twelfth, you can see it's clear, and then here comes a storm. As the storm comes in, you can see these pipes are actually filling up with, with water. Right, the level of the, of the trough come, comes through there, and you can see where the two, that's a lift station out there in... In the industrial park and in the one by the transfer station. Lift station two, four and five? Five and seven were the ones that were... That basin, the red area there, John, that is, well, that, that all drains to, to lift station seven. That's where we actually had to place the pump in the sewer wet well to be pumping out into the lake. Now that lift station catches water. We just isolated the, the actual basin, and it goes clear across State Street. So we're collecting a big area of the city that dumps into, into lift station seven. So now with this, this data, we'll be able to, for, for next budget year, once we get more money for, for the study, we will deploy those large number of sensors to start saying, "Okay, how far up the system?" Because it's like all these fingers, right? So we have to figure out from which side infiltration is coming, so we can narrow it down and go, go, go find that. But it's, it's, it's a better approach than saying, "I think it's here, and let's go try to line all these pipes that maybe they need to be relined."
And, and if I could just add one, thi- this is called a condition-based approach, and this is something that Juan's incorporated in several different places. We do acoustic assessments, I don't know if you've heard of the sewer line rat that's been out through the city and the tones that it's making in the sewer system. It's looking for blockages using sound, rather than having to take a big jet truck out to clean all the lines. That's called a condition-based approach, where we find the problem and then we fix it, as opposed to just trying to shotgun everything. And I think Juan's been a really, really, I mean, he naturally has an affinity for data, which is a great asset to the, to the city, I think. And that's exactly the same approach here, is using data to really take a smart approach to infrastructure management. So, yeah, kudos to this, this city being a very smart city.
Thank you, this is tremendous, really exciting to know that we're taking such a great technological data-driven approach to really do some, some great things, so.
So I just invited John to give us this presentation, so...
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes, please.
Are there any perfect systems out there? Is, is there a goal to have a perfectly enclosed system, or is that just not even really a goal?
The, the best that we've seen is an improvement, and we, we hope to accelerate this. A city in California took ten years to improve their system by thirty percent. It took a lot of effort for them to get that far, they did not have these tools. What we're hoping is this will accelerate. And when I say improve by, by thirty percent, meaning to mitigate the infiltration in the system by thirty percent. So we have, I think we have a lot of, we're very optimistic this is going to do better than that. And are there any perfect systems? Everyone has infiltration, it's just a question of to what degree.
Do we have any sense of, if we're able to, to prevent some of this infiltration from whatever the source is, then that's going to reduce the amount that we're processing, right? Lower our cost.
Yes.
Do we have any idea of what kind of an ROI we get on that, right? We work on this for two years, we work on this, and pretty soon we reduce our overall costs, and therefore we have a payoff that happens in one year, in five years, in ten years. Does that make sense?
It's an excellent question. I don't, we didn't prepare that coming, I don't know if you've, if you've done that exercise.
Well, what we do, we get an adjustment from Orem City every year of how much water we're sending to their sewer treatment plant. And every year, it's been increasing. This last year, we actually, even with that big inflow, our monthly rate decreased just by a few, by a few dollars. So that's the goal, is to eliminate all that extra water sending to Orem, and that's direct savings on our rates to our, to our residents. Because treatment is one of those large amounts of money that we spend on. As far as rate or return on investment, I haven't...
I would imagine one of the big benefits too is you just know the health of your system and where your points are that are going to break down too, so you can keep preventative.
And one way that I do balance those, those two numbers is how much water we're selling for that we're going to be draining into, into Orem City, you know, from our pumping, our wells, for culinary, and how much we are sending to, to Orem. And right now, we're, we're selling this many gallons, and we're paying for this much gallons in treatment, so...
Yeah.
That is a, another, another area that I see that, that big amount of money that...
The, in addition, sorry.
And, and the other thing is, our capacity to, to Orem City is one point six million gallons of sewage per day. And there are some, some, some months that we are pushing the one point four, one point five million gallons per day in those, in those rain events. So we want to, the, the more, the more we lower that, that's more sewage capacity we have for growth, and, you know, put more houses, more buildings, more...
This slide right here, I was, I'm glad you came back on that, because that kind of went by. This thirty-five to fifty percent of all treated wastewater was never used. What, kind of walk me through that.
Right, so that's, that's that example that I was telling you that...
Didn't come from a toilet or a sink.
That if I'm, if I'm selling one million gallons of water per day, and we're getting built for one point three million, that's, that's three hundred thousand gallons extra that I didn't sell, but we're paying for in treatment.
So it's groundwater that's leaching into the stormwater?
Stormwater, groundwater infiltration.
Or sewer pipes, groundwater or rainwater?
Okay.
Well, thank you, this is great information. We look forward to learning more about, you know, what's discovered through the process, so thank you.
And thank you for being a good partner for us. We really appreciate Linden's help and what we're trying to develop too.
I'm going to have one follow-up question. So as we tighten up our system, that water has to go somewhere on rain events. So do we make sure our stormwater is ready to handle that?
Yeah, the stormwater system.
Right, we had that conversation earlier today with what, why we need detention basins and why we have all that extra water that, you know, comes out and it starts flowing in the streets, eventually finds a manhole and gets in there. So it's a, we have to, to fix storm drain, invest in storm drain, conveyance to, to the lake, and also tighten up our, our, our system problem.
Very good, thank you so much, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate your good work, and thank you to our, our other public work staff that are here as well.
Yeah, Paul has been instrumental in, in getting all this to happen with RH Borden, facilitating the, all the surveys that they're doing. They're also, RH Borden also helped us find manholes that had a lot of hydrogen sulfide and were deteriorating, and that's the manhole that Van was making reference to that we went and rebuilt with that fiberglass. But no, that, 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 that's one of the lines that is above capacity, and that's in our master plan with sewer system. We, we have to make some lines larger for, for growth.
Awesome.
Can you give, this was mentioned earlier, Juan, but can you just give a high level on that letter that went out to our residents on the pipes?
Yes, so Steve and Lincoln already brought up, we finished our, the survey that was mandated by EPA. We had to have it done by October 31st, and we met that deadline. The water department and especially Matt Winward was working overtime to, to get all this information gathered. We have a whole map just with the different information he had to fill out, and we ended up with about seven hundred and forty-eight properties that we could not... that we could not for certain say this, this residence doesn't have any lead. We send out this, this is a draft letter that we got from EPA on, on places where we have to go and test those pipes. One is at the meter can. Some that might not be for certain, we have to go in between the meter can and the house, and then do the third one inside the, inside the house. And this is the, the information we put out of what, getting the residents to, they, sometimes they can do their own tests. And if they couldn't quite figure it out, then we put our information to come and, and tell us what it is. Once we get that, then if, we haven't found any yet that are positive lead, but then we have to make arrangements with that, the property owners, on how to, to do the, the replacement.
How did you guys feel about the service and?
That's what I mentioned, it was great. Because I, I looked at this, and I consider myself a somewhat intelligent individual, but I, I just couldn't figure out from my house, and I know everyone, every property's unique. So Paul came out and helped me identify at least one piece. And now there's got to be some testing done, I guess, on both sides of the meter to kind of confirm.
Right.
Some things, so yeah, I'll, I'll wait for that and see what happens.
We had Matt get some magnets and then start getting the, I think Matt is going to do it personally where he goes and.
My intention was to try to get trained myself so I could help others, and I went and forget it. I'll just refer them.
Yeah, and that, and that's what we're here for too.
So I had a few folks reach out to me, and is it an age of the home that, that puts it into that category?
Yeah, so lead started being outlawed in the early 80s. Even, even when you say, well, the line is not lead, but the copper soldering, some, some of those were, were using lead solder. But then for sure, in the 50s, 60s, and some early 70s, was a lot of galvanized and still a lot of, a lot of lead pipe.
Yeah.
Being, being installed. My first home that I bought here in Utah was 1906. And when I replaced my water line, the whole thing was, was lead. Back then, it was no, no big deal, you know, just an old pipe, we just want to have a new one and.
So if, if it is a lead pipe, we are going to tell our residents that, and then it's their responsibility to replace it?
Correct, from the.
What's, what's that typical cost?
Usually, like about under $3,000 to go from the meter to, to the house. A lot of the times, they can actually just excavate by the meter and by the house, and they're able to.
Go through the pipe.
To pull it through. If it's, if it's in bad shape, for example, galvanized, used to have a coupler. So with those, usually you start pulling and it breaks in the couplers, you have to excavate the entire length. Of course, a lot of these homes, maybe there's elderly people that might be on fixed incomes, and we're exploring a way of, once we find them, see what kind of situation they're in. EPA and the state says you might have to intervene to help them replace and then put them on a payment. Kind of finance it for them and, and, but we'll, we'll.
Are we referring plumbers, I, I guess?
Not, not yet, we're.
We have a list of, of good ones, or does that put us in liability?
Do that. We're not to that point yet, where we can say, do not, the only thing we advise is, plumbers are great for indoor plumbing, but when you're doing excavation, contact an excavator, excavator, and then get both, the pricing from both, both people, so.
So, I ran out to my meter, and I went just past the meter on what looked like it was going underground. That looked like copper to me. I went to my shut-off valve, and I looked on my main water shut-off, and I looked below that, that looked like that was copper. I have copper.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
I guess it's possible there could be plastic between some fittings, but.
Yeah, as far as we can tell, is, they wouldn't go copper to lead to copper.
Right.
They would have just said, if I'm doing copper, I'm doing copper all the way to your house. And that is usually a one-piece that they just kind of roll out like a hose. And, and then inside the house is where they start, you know, putting an elbow on a tee, and that's where they used to use the solder. But at, at that, at this point, they are not requiring that all the solder be replaced or.
Plumbing solder was lead-free late 80s on, right?
Exactly. So that's why they're, at this point, they're just focusing on the, from the meter to the house. And of course, the city had to go do an inventory of all of our distribution pipes. And that are all of our setters, you know, all of our setters are fairly.
When I read the letter, I thought that I saw something in there about federal grants and such to help people? Did I, is anything like that available to, to homeowners?
We, they haven't made it available through, through EPA, they have. But through the state, we're still in that discovery process of how big of a problem are we, are we going to have? Once they figure out the magnitude of analyzing all the data, you know, there's big, big problems, then they might come up with some funding. But at this point, they're saying, give us the data, you might have to assist the city if you, if you want. But once we analyze the problem and see who's calling, we'll, we'll bring a suggestion to, or our opinion to you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate getting everyone healthy water connection, so.
And John, we're grateful for sewer geeks, nerds, rock. We need you.
Very good, thank you so much. Anything else, Juan?
I'll stay here, you see if I have any questions about the four-way stop.
Okay, we'll move on then to item number nine. This is a review and action regarding a proposed four-way stop on Center Street and 200 East.
So included in your staff report is a recommendation from our city engineers, recommending that the 200 East and Center Street intersection be made a four-way stop. And during the, the construction period, a four-way stop was installed, and it's actually been striped. And we got a little bit ahead of ourselves somewhere along the line, and so.
Going to say, I drove here, it's like, but it's already four-way striped.
Yeah, so it's, the signs have been installed, and it's striped. It functioned here over the last few months during this closure as a four-way. We've had several comments online on some of our posts about the Center Street project with people asking for this four-way stop to remain. And the engineers, as they evaluated it, felt like since it's functioned this way for a period of time, it would, could be detrimental to remove that, and without a lot of notice.
I think it's great, we have the two schools right there, and so getting everyone.
And that was one of the concerns when we were talking about this whole project, was, you know, the speed of cars going up there. Here's a great way to, you know, another place where we can slow traffic.
Traffic calming.
Yep. So if you're okay with that, just a motion is always needed to make that official.
All right, so a bit of housekeeping essentially, unless you feel like you need to discuss it any further, counsel?
I, I had a question. I, I saw in the notes that, I guess typically, there would be a traffic study as part of a, to develop a four-way. And I didn't know if there's wisdom, because 400 East, 200 East, and then there's the Main Street and Center, those are the sort of main intersections around the schools. And I just didn't know if doing a study would still be smart to assess the Main Street and Center Street intersection as well? Or if really, for that 200 East and Center Street, all they want, all, all they need for the, the study would be the east-west traffic? And not the north-south traffic? So I just, I guess part of me didn't know if it was just wiser if we're going to make changes to, to make them similar time? Or there wouldn't be need? Maybe, I just, I just didn't know how a block away, there wouldn't be need for the same sort of thing if we're arguing that it could use it at 200 East?
That's, that's a great question, Cole, but not something that we've studied or looked at in any way at this point. And so as far as Main Street, it does indicate here, in talking with our engineers, my understanding is they do intend to perform a traffic study once this is all open and everybody's moving through all of Center Street. And he says in his last sentence there, if, if the study finds that maintaining an all-way stop severely impacts traffic, then reverting back to a two-way stop can be accomplished with the inclusion of additional signage. So their intent is to look at this after it's all open and make sure that it's functioning correctly. We, we did have a concern come up that a lot of the point of the roundabout was to help move traffic through that 400 East intersection and prevent some of the backups that are occurring during school pickup and drop off. We get dozens and dozens of cars stacked up behind those stop signs. And so by inclusion of this, there is, there is a potential that we're just moving that congestion two blocks over after building the roundabout. So in response to your question, yes, I know the engineers want to do a full study once the road is open. I can ask about Main Street, but that hasn't ever come up to my knowledge.
Would it be prudent to do that study after the temple opens as well? I know that's still a year out, but things are going to have the potential to change significantly in a year, right? I'd hate to waste money quickly and then.
And my understanding is typically the traffic study is to determine if there's enough traffic to warrant putting in the stop signs. And I think there's no question there's warranted enough traffic, that the stop signs are appropriate. So for example, when I proposed a four-way on Locust and 400 North, the engineers said, it could be enough traffic there, but let's do a traffic study to make sure. So I think, just anecdotally knowing the school activity and whatnot, I don't, I don't think the traffic study, we need a traffic study to say there's enough traffic here that the stops are appropriate. So is there any other reason that the traffic study would lend information?
Would the traffic study show that it's a congestion point, and that there's too much, right? Either case. Detained, where maybe another roundabout, I didn't say that out loud.
But I think the four-ways are also very good, because for the safe routes to school, the children, there are a lot of children that walk down 200 East to Lyndon Elementary and to Tepanogus Academy, as well as Center Street. I see children walking, and so, you know, right now we have the flags on the corners for them to potentially, you know, come out into traffic with a flag. And so I think a four-way is just, with, being so close to the schools, they're, yeah.
So, so we own the, the equipment to do the traffic studies, so we can, we, we constantly have them out. They're never sitting just underneath somebody's desk. So in this case, we're going to do that study again when, when school's out, when, when we have a summer vacation, when, when the temple opens. So we'll just keep it, keep it going to make, justify that, that four-way stop. What we didn't want to do was, it wasn't a four-way stop, then during construction.
It's a four-way.
Have a four-way stop, and then make it a two-way stop, and then having to come back and say, yeah, we warrant a four-way stop.
The back and forth is what I worry about. I think the idea is right now.
To, to, to leave it, because people are now used to it. And then do the traffic study, and then come back to you with the data, say.
I think the concern at Main Street is that there's such a short approach from a signal on, on State Street up east, you're hitting that really quickly. If you're turning that corner and you have a stop sign, you could potentially have a real problem there, yeah. Backing up to State Street.
And the good thing we have there is that during, during school, we do have that crossing guard.
Right.
That facilitates that. But I think when school is not in session, I think.
Right.
That movement should be, you know, there is not a, a long distance between Main Street and Second East to, to warrant another. But we can always put another sensor there and do a traffic study on, on, on Main and Center.
Our motion is to appropriately do what we've already done, to support what we've already done. And following this, this decision, we'll still do further traffic studies to determine if it needs to be modified.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Correct. If there's not more discussion, I'm happy to make the motion. I move to approve a four-way stop at 200 East Center Street as presented, knowing that additional studies will be performed. Can I say that?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs and seconded by Councilmember Stewart. We have a motion on table, any further discussion?
I, I just have one question. So Juan, I think I heard you right. So the city, we own the equipment to do this study. So the cost, there isn't like an additional cost, it's just where we want to put the machines, is that right?
Right, it's just, it's just the time it takes for our engineer to go set up the, the machine, and then take out the, the data and analyze it, and so it's very, very minimal cost.
Okay. Because my, my sense is, I know we just had a conversation about sidewalks and wanting to uniform our thinking about when the city pays and when we don't. And so in a similar vein, if there's a procedure for installing a four-way, I know this is a unique situation where we're formalizing something that's already been done. If the traffic study doesn't cost anything, and we were to do it, and it were to confirm the need of one even without the increased traffic, or if it's within reason, it seems to further solidify the rationale for it, and would be, it adhered a little bit more closely to what we have on the books to avoid sort of by situation deciding these things. But anyway, just a thought, that if there isn't much of a cost to move forward with the study, if it turns out that there isn't a need, then we would know it would warrant probably another study when it gets open. But if it shows even being close to needing it, we can only assume it would get more traffic and would warrant it from our, our current standard. But anyway, just a thought about trying to keep things uniform a little bit.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion. Any further discussion or questions? All right, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juan.
All right, we now are on item number 10. This is the last item for our agenda this evening, and this is a closed session for our city council to discuss potential purchase or sale of real property or pending or possible litigation. This is per Utah code. Due to this being a closed session, we will have a motion and then restart the recording.
I move to enter a closed session.
I second.
A motion by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Jacobs. All in favor?
It's a rock.
Van Broderick, aye.
Steve Stewart, aye.
Carolyn Lundberg, aye.
Lincoln Jacobs, aye.
Okay. Wonderful.
We need to get Cole.